This is the flag of the United States of America. Two republics, which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I think there's a bunch of questions here except for two board members and Lisa and Mr. Krabs. You guys don't worry about that. This is on the door. This is Stacy, board members, Scott Krabs, and Lisa, our district manager. We all know Big Bob. So, uh, so since we have no public here, I don't have to go through the whole spiel of no public comment. That's another board member here. So if the public doesn't see an on-go screen, it's either about saying fine, and we'll get like two of your interviewers listening for what you guys wanted. We thought after we met with you guys, we'd nice to ask you to talk to the board, the board to hear your thoughts. So it's just not a key or standing decision. Okay? I don't know your names, but I introduced you, Phil.
All right. We'll do that.
Can you see the screen when we're sitting here?
Yeah. And we have 45 minutes aside for each group throughout the presentation.
Okay. We have about a 20-minute presentation. Are you ready? Great. All right. Well, my name is Matt Melnemo. I'm the vice president of Land Associates. I am the principal in charge of the New York office, and this is my team. I'm also a licensed architect. I've worked with Land Associates for 18 years. I have three children, 12, eight, and five, so I can understand the changing dynamic of the educational workspace and instructional space, and I have a very prestigious team. And yeah.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. My name is Danielle Farrell. I am an assistant vice president at Land, and I'm also a registered architect. I've also been with Land for 18 years, coincidentally. I've been in the architectural field for 22 years, and I primarily focused on K-12 design during that time. For your project, I would be your client liaison. All of us would work on the project at different times. Matt mostly in the beginning with myself, and then it will transition to me with Eric and Taylor. So thank you for having us.
My name is Eric Boe. I've been with Land Associates for 20 years now. I am in charge of the civil engineering department, being charged for the full site related only.
My name is Taylor Thomas. I'm also a registered architect. I've been project president. Played it. Oh, played it. Orange County, the other side of Elgin years ago.
So a little bit about Land Associates. We've been in business since 1965. We've owned an office in Goshen, New York since 1999. We have about 25 employees working out of our Goshen, New York office. We have over 100 employees across our five offices throughout New York, New Jersey. We are a full-service firm, meaning we offer architecture, engineering, planning, and surveying, full trade of mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineers. However, we've been blessed and fortunate with a lot of work in HVAC field right now. So our team consists of Gerard Associates that will provide us with the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, engineering services for your school district. Gerard Associates has been a partner of ours for about 15 years, and they are located right across the street from our office on Main Street in Goshen. We've had a tremendously successful relationship with Gerard Associates, working on Bronxville Union Free School District and Goshen Central School District. They've also represented us on several other public projects. So our team is primarily, our team as at Land Associates, is providing architecture, civil engineering, and construction administration. And this is a representation of our New York K-12 clients that we've established over the last 20 years, some of which are very close to your area. Our team structure, as we got into a little bit, I would be your project executive. I'm your crisis control manager. I'm your first point of contact if you have a major problem. I'm your first point of contact throughout your pre-referendum process. Danielle will steward the entire process from beginning to end. Taylor and Eric will be intimately involved with your project as it transitions from pre-referendum to post-referendum and we get into the implementation of the design. Taylor and Eric will take more of a front role. We won't be passing the baton per se and disappearing. We're always available to you. But this is essentially our team. Also of mention, Chris Beckler and Megan UCL, who are licensed architects, is part of our design team. Jerry Luch and Scott Ziegler from Gerard Associates. We use a structural engineering consultant called McCucci Engineering. And our landscape architectural firm is called Biosphere if you have a need for landscape architectural designs. The one thing we'd like to say about your schedule, we're very happy to report it's feasible and it's reasonable. It's not something that we always walk into a school district to get the luxury of saying. Thank you for putting a reasonable schedule together. I'm assuming that Bob and Savin have a lot to do with that, and I'm assuming that having reasonable people as part of your leadership team has a lot to do with that. There's certainly an understanding of the current climate bidding market, but we appreciate having a schedule that we think is practical. We've looked at your scope of work. We've had a prior interview. We've shared some documents with each other. We have a very good understanding of what you sort of want to prioritize. These are some of the projects that were referenced, both in the first effort and then since Land has offered a master summary or a master cost estimate document, we've sort of gotten some feedback. And some of the scope, such as a new maker space, has been in addition to the program. We're very happy to hear some of the program changes and modifications really speaks to what are some of our strengths. So one thing that we didn't get to share with you during our first interview is preparing a preliminary design. We went out and we walked on your field today. We took a look around, and we have some thoughts about it. Prior to walking the field and walking the track and taking a look at the topography, there were certainly some thoughts that we put on paper here that speak to the approach that you want to take or was given to us. I'm not sure that that approach is 100% the direction you'll end up going. There may be some other options we want to consider, but what we're showing here is essentially what Eric, you want to explain the track design?
Certainly. We went ahead and designed it, so if you want to bid it, pretty much. What we're showing here is a regulation. All tired, right? You know, this is sort of the direction it's going. Obviously, this is a large. A lot of talent, no doubt about it. A lot of strength, audacity, talent. Still a lot of field. Getting track. On on, a regulation. Current track doesn't meet the requirement. Well, it's not funny, but Rick is doing it in a reasonable way. You have the land, so it's just a matter of how can we massage this target across the structure? So, yeah.
That was something we took note of today. Well, there's a lot of things that we learned today that we weren't really privy or aware of prior. You can look at an aerial map, and it just looks like flat topography. And I think if this mouse works, we can talk about some of the steep embankment that you have on this side. The runoff on this side is, in order to get this tree line cut back and the amount of cut on the actual field itself, just to level this or slope this off properly. I think the tree cuts are going to be a lot more significant than we're showing on this graphic. So we may want to talk about pushing the baseball field back and cutting into the hillside to make more room. Pardon me? You're going to need additional parking, and there's definitely a component of ADA accessibility that is going to be a theme of this project. But I think perhaps maybe pushing the baseball field back a little bit and cutting the hillside if the property, if you have enough property back there, if it allows you to, to avoid skimming five feet off the field and moving it over to the side is a lot of earth. Maybe there's some other options that we can get a little bit more creative and just find out a more ideal solution.
For spectators, we have done a couple of aerials. Top, which works well in the general. But obviously, it also. So it's a matter of how much rise the project. Further you have to go down, the longer you have to pass. Again, you're blessed with a lot of land.
Yeah, and we have shown what is a fieldhouse structure here. There is actually an ADA ramp on the side. Is that moving up there? Okay. So bleachers set in front for about 300 people?
Yeah, it was just shy of 300 people just in that configuration with a 2,000-square-foot bathroom, concession stand, and storage.
Yeah, so a concession stand favored towards the publicly accessible side, restroom, splitting the difference with a storage area on the right side of your private district home. That's just.
It's probably not only because of stuff. So we'd up the value. But it's all going to the same system. Make the argument that it's a counter.
I don't think what you're going to get here in terms of spectators is going to perhaps exceed the maximum possible that the septic system would.
It's all about analyzing tools as a whole, the way they would have counted.
So this is just the first crack at it. It's what we had enough time to do between the last interview and today. We wanted to put this on paper because there are definitely some talking points that we learned about last time. We wanted to bring them to the table. Walking the site today opens our eyes to some others' possibilities, and it's an iterative process. So we want to be able to interact with you and collaborate with you, explain to you where our area of expertise is and our suggestions come from, and having a graphic, if there are any questions about what's up on the screen, let us know now. We can't afford any more questions.
Obviously, our design process is dark, long process, pretty slicked out. Really good job.
So we talk a lot about the criteria for a successful bond referendum, and we work with a lot of boards of educations. And one of the most important components is a board of education unity. You, as a board, have to be collectively unified to present this vision to your community. And if there's one member of your board who disagrees with this and says that publicly, we find that their representation of their community in your referendum is more than likely not going to be successful. So getting on the same page as early as possible. I don't want to walk in here and assume I know anything about you, but I just want to make sure that you understand our perspective is when you have a board that is not unified in their approach, not unified in their message, it's been our experience that those referendums are not successful. So we feel that that's one of the most important components. Our process is to assess the existing conditions, evaluate your priority projects, essentially do what's up on the screen, meet with your stakeholders, prioritize and finalize the scope of work, working with your construction manager, recommend hiring or consider hiring a PR firm. It's your call. We have a great marketing team. They're very, we just passed a referendum in Mount Pleasant. They contribute to the success of that passage, and we are here and able to support you. So the pre-referendum services that were offered in our follow-up letter, just let me explain a little bit about that. We would meet with your stakeholders, which is your board of ed, your administrators, your construction manager, and whomever else you think needs to be at the table. We would certainly review the existing conditions and prioritize the scope of work. We would likely need to coordinate a property survey based on the topography we saw today. I think that's even more important than ever. Coordinate a geotechnical study. That will help us narrow down the accuracy of the cost estimates. In other words, if Bob's giving you a number of $5 million to do a field, and it's based on five feet of cut, and we find out there's perhaps a better way to do it, maybe we can save you $500,000 here to use somewhere else and come up with a better, a more practical solution. Perhaps we find out that the soil conditions aren't so great, and digging into them doesn't really yield the best result, and we want to avoid that cost. So there's reasons why we do this methodically and sequentially. Reviewing the existing conditions and providing those services to find a consultant to provide the service is really helpful for us to narrow down the cost and the scope of the work. We could also provide marketing assistance throughout the entire marketing campaign, and we could be available to facilitate and then present the public. We have a great technical, young, design team. They're very good at models, renderings, and animations. Some of our work will showcase a little bit further down the presentation. We don't provide that as part of a fixed fee. The reason being is each individual rendering, each individual animation requires building a model. And until we understand the limits of the model and what you want to show your community, it's really hard for us to price it out. So we've excluded that service, and that speaks to our prior interview where I threw out a higher number of what we would offer for pre-referendum. We were able to lower our number if we can exclude that. If you want to do animations and models and renderings, we can certainly give you a separate proposal to provide that service. And we'll show you an example of our work, and I think you'll find it pretty compelling. Pre-referendum services, we have a marketing department of about five people. They are very well-versed in web and advertising, marketing services. They offer all of the services that are shown up on the screen: social media, campaign, public relations, community presentations, assisting with mailers and flyers, videos, photography. If you do not have an in-house marketing department or PR department, which I'm not sure if you do, they can piggyback and assist filling that role. Oh, perfect. So we're used to working with one person as a PR or a marketing department in a school district. That's common. It's also really good because she connects well and interacts well with your administration. And all we're doing is trying to support your efforts. So we work at their direction. They tell you what to do. You tell us what to do. We're happy to support you in any way possible. We did pass a referendum in Mount Pleasant at the end of March. It was a referendum that was tabled two years ago as we were approaching the peak of COVID. March 16th, our referendum for March 30th, 2020, canceled two weeks before the referendum. I've never had a circumstance like that happen before. It was disastrous. Everybody has gone through this COVID experience, and they all have their war stories. What I can say is when we were brought back on, the project was brought back on, they decided to engage with our marketing department to do a PR campaign. And we were very successful in reaching out to the community. There was a very low opposition, no vote for this particular referendum. It was pent-up demand. Seven of nine school districts in Westchester already had artificial turf fields. Perhaps it was paid accomplian, and our marketing department had less to do with it, but they were very supportive of the district's needs, and they did do a great work. Our design process is very simple. It's what's shown on the screen. We'll meet with you. We listen to what you want. We try to give you what you asked for. We don't make it complicated. Along the way, we'll show you some fancy sketches, some really fantastic technical renderings to demonstrate the vision of what you asked for, confirm that that vision is exactly what you need, that's exactly what you want, and if it's not, we'll continue to refine it so it's reflective of what you asked for. We have a tremendous amount of referendum experience. Mount Pleasant just passing $9.7 million.
Six, five fields?
Two turf fields, three natural grass fields, nine point.
Seven, eight, ten, twenty.
Right, true. One field that may be an artificial turf field rather than a grass field. That's their buy-up strategy as an alternate. Bronxville Union Free School District, we passed two referendums, a $4.5 million and a $24.8 million referendum. Savin Engineers represented Bronxville as their construction manager. We interacted with Savin and worked well together. We're also working with Rynek right now with Savin. Danielle's the project architect over at Rynek, working with Joe Tollup and Savin. We have a great relationship with them. They've done very good by us. We've done very good by them. But also referendum experience, Goshen Central School District, two referendums, $3.9 million, roughly $35 million. Monroe Woodbury, $8.3 million. $7.3 of it was new fields. A million dollars was in HVAC, up there, schooling tower. So going back to the idea of we have got great technical people, young, energetic, enthusiastic designers who are really willing to pump and flex their muscle and their software capabilities. So on the left side of the screen, you see some of our renderings. On the right side of the screen, you see the finished product. I would challenge most people to say which is which, albeit I can see without the students in the top-left rendering, you'll know that that's less likely a finished product. But we do great work. We really visualize what the space looks like. We try to make sure that it represents what your needs are, and we really think it out in advance so that you know that what you're selling to the community is exactly what you're getting. A couple more examples of our rendering capabilities on the left. These involve making 3D models that then go into Photoshop, render them, light them. Strong capabilities, technical, artistic capabilities, if you need them. So relevant experience in athletic field design, one of the most important to Danielle and I. Danielle and I are both Goshen residents. We both represented Land Associates for the last 18 years. We live, our children go to our Goshen school district. We work in the community. We're under a microscope of our own community at all times. There's a lot of risk and a lot of reward with that. We love going out to lunch and seeing the local community who ask us great things about their projects, sometimes not so great things about their taxes, but that's what doing business in your own community is like, right? And you guys are going to go out and you're going to do the same thing. When you go down to the general store and you got to pick up a six-pack for the weekend, you're going to find a community member who says, hey, I heard about that capital project. Is it going to impact my taxes? And you have to be prepared for those casual interactions. That's why I mean board unity is so critical, to have a common theme of your referendum and a common understanding of what you're trying to convey to your. So you want to talk about site?
All right. There's a lot on here. We certainly don't have to read it, but fact of the matter is 65% of power. So a lot of that. All of the things. Top notch. So we were lucky enough to kind of catch the wave of artificial turf as a area past 50. So we've done a lot of artificial turf. Rubberized tracks over. So many, in fact, in fact, placement. Well, we're very familiar with artificial turf. We're. Three different manufacturers. Fields. Anytime we get into a system, hit the beat, then all the good products offer to bring. Board counts. Frankly, my opinion is that they all make very good products. Any one of them will tell you that it has to be terrible. We wouldn't work with it. Happy. Track surfacing thing. So this is a list of most of athletic, large athletic field projects, practice field projects.
I will say that usually when we respond to a K-12 proposal in New York State, they limit the amount of experience you have into New York State. But we've been in business for over 55 years, and most of our office, I would say 85 people are in our New Jersey office. We have a long history of doing artificial turf fields that extends beyond the border of New York, and the field design doesn't, correctly, it doesn't change when you cross the border from New Jersey, right?
It changes if you're in Texas. York to New Jersey.
All right.
In Texas, they get really hot.
So that's experience.
Sure. So going through the design process for a field, we're going to start with Liam. So some districts, they're willing to move the fields around. Looking. That might make more sense. Some districts are very active, building, artificial. But we're going to evaluate that with what killing. Maybe based on our concept design, maybe that and that. So this is Goshen Field, so we're very proud of. They see all the time, this was a very similar scenario. They had an aging track. They had a 16-inch track that wanted to upgrade. Agreed. Then track, same area along Danielle's friends, then here. And we were also in a artificial turf type problem. One of the things I like about this, take a shot, Kelly's lighting. You'll notice that right outside the perimeter of the track, it's perfectly dark. And that's what they do. Fashion. Light up the whole. Nobody does that anymore. These are designed down to the foot, and it's perfect likeness of everything that doesn't play.
Yeah, one of the lessons we learned here at Goshen is this whole entire hilltop is shale. It's all rotten. And so when we talk about taking five feet off of something, that's no small task. And we've learned in the past by doing our due diligence that there is a time and a place where that makes sense. At the moment, we don't know that that makes sense. It sounds like a decent idea. It sounds reasonable. It sounds logical. But perhaps we do some due diligence, and then we make a decision. So as far as Goshen goes, the athletic facility is a fieldhouse with a grandstand built over the top of it that then supports a press box at the center. We won't use the word grandstand here per se because I'm not sure that this community is ready for a grandstand, but we'll use the word or term bleachers. Yes, we were, when we were doing the project campaign, the PR campaign for Goshen, we were warned, you cannot call it a stadium. As soon as the referendum passed, everybody called it a stadium.
The Colosseum, the Goshen Coliseum, they started calling it. So not only did they call it a stadium, but they called it the Colosseum.
Yeah.
Coliseum.
It is. And so maybe on a much smaller scale, though, it's the same concept, right? You have a set of bleachers that we will overrun a fieldhouse structure that will support a press box. Doesn't matter if it's 1,500 seats or 300 seats. The concept is essentially the same. Another project that we're working on, Taylor is a project architect, working on 12th Rock Sports. It's a 115,000-square-foot new indoor athletic facility. It has an indoor running track, an indoor turf field, four basketball courts, eight volleyball courts, a center spline area. It is a massive undertaking, a massive athletic facility. Pre-engineered metal building, large structure, two great clients, Greg and Mark Jalazinski, who have this Christian youth coaching message. Wonderful client, really struggling with capital fundraising. So if anybody here wants to make a donation, the project's trying to get off. Yeah, you can go to our website. You can scan this QR code. There's a video animation. It's a pretty significant undertaking for us, probably about a $20,000 effort. Give you some sense. It's all interior animated. It's what they're using for their fundraising campaign. And when they show somebody a video, it's far more compelling than a static image. It's far more compelling than us sitting up here telling you how great it is. And it really just sells the story. So it's a great asset for you.
Monroe Woodbury was a big one that we did, big in that have a lot of land. Started off this project with a master plan, and this one really required a master plan because it was laid out in a hazardous, such a way that a lot of it. All in spring, course overlapping in ways that were multi-team at the same time. Oftentimes, didn't work. Didn't make sense. So because they did have a lot of land, we were able to rethink our whole strategy. We were able to lay out, build way more. They, very similarly, had a track, grass field, wanted to upgrade turf. So we did, sort of drift it out, placed track, scratch, artificial field. In addition, we were able to get in artificial. Here's baseball slash soccer on an upward here. This one's.
So I promised you we would do this in 20 minutes, and since we already passed that, I'm going to move through it at a quicker pace. Danielle, you want to talk about NIAAC?
Yeah, it was unique in a few different ways. The first way was that we didn't design the fields for this project, but we were approached to design a press box with bathrooms and a concession stand, which probably sounds pretty familiar seeing that that's one of the things you're looking to do. But we were to design it and locate it between bleachers that were already in place and a road that was already in place with fields. So we had to build this structure in a very narrow place. But also, it was driven by a community group that wanted the base to look like their old high school. It was very sentimental to them, so they did a lot of fundraising. And we did our best to make this look like their old high school because there was such that sentimental value to it, even down to the Kubla, which is an exact replica. that sentimental value to it, even down to the Kubla, which is an exact replica, just at a smaller scale.
We're going to go through these. You know, honestly, we do so many roofs, hundreds, maybe even thousands of roof replacement projects over the last 20. I would never come into a public presentation and focus the glitzy opportunity to showcase all of our wonderful work, to show you some roof membrane restoration projects. But we do, I would say, we probably do about 20 a year conservatively, and that's across our multiple offices. What you're doing here, again, due diligence is the most important part. We would recommend a nuclear scan, figure out the areas of possible wet insulation underneath the membrane, find out if your membrane is. Yes, 15,000 square feet of it is metal. The other 45,000 square feet of it is a single ply membrane. What we're looking to do is try to find a way to save you money. And if we can reuse the insulation underneath, we can restore the roof if it passes a forensic tensile test. We can actually restore it, coat it with a new product, which means you don't have to raise the insulation levels up to comply with the current energy code. That is something you can do if you want to do it, but it is a way to save money. And the return on that investment, especially now with the cost of rigid polyisoe insulation, is a lot longer pending. But there's a potential there to save you a significant amount of money if we can restore it rather than completely. I'll flip through a couple of other projects, some media centers, if you want to talk about that.
Yeah, so media centers, libraries used to be a place where you had books and you stored your books. And now, really, they're more multimedia centers. So it's not a place that you have to go and just read a book. You can curl up with a good book, which is great, but there's also these other components. So it's really more of a gathering space for large groups and for small groups, and then also for individual study. So we really kind of have seen a transformation in libraries, and it's a type of project that we really have tried. Active learning spaces. So this is a way to have students get their hands on things. So STEAM labs and maker spaces, as well as culinary arts. We incorporate a lot of interactive walls. That could be a whiteboard where they work out problems. It also could be a Lego wall where they're building in 3D. Also shown here in the bottom is a green screen so they can do production and infuse technology. So the maker movement, there's four main parts of the maker movement. We have the collaborative design areas. We also have the solo design areas, the launch pad, which is what I was talking about. That's where you get up and you show your ideas, be it with an interactive wall. And then you also have the bits and pieces. That's a lot of storage of the small pieces, of the things that you're going to be using throughout the space. This is a floor plan. So this is actually about the size of a typical classroom that's converted into a maker space. So here you have the number ones, which are the launch pads, and you have your maker storage along the perimeter. And you have your solo work design area and your collaborative design area. So that's in the center. You can move those, flexibility is key, so you can move all of that furniture around so students can work together. And then you also have your informational learning zone, which has interactive displays for presentation. And the next slide is actually, this is that same floor plan, so you can see the different
So this is a STEAM lab that we, Danielle and us, at the high school. This is. Love to show you what the finished product looks like. This was a.
Oh, okay. Just to be clear, we don't actually work with any PR firms on the outside. If the school district chooses to do that, that's their own decision. We have seen school districts hire PR firms after failed referendums, and we have seen success in passing referendums by hiring a PR firm. That being said, I'm not recommending it. It's just a suggestion we put on the table. That's your decision to make. We have a very good, robust marketing department. We have been very successful in working with our own internal team. If you have an internal marketing or communications director, I feel like we have the pieces here internally to make that happen. We treat all our clients the same. We hope that they're going to become one of our family. We give them close personal attention. We're responsive. One of our core values is responsiveness and attentiveness. It's one of the things that we really focus on. So whether it's a big district or a small district, we give everybody the same attention to detail and customer service. Certainly. I mean, Chester Union Free School District is one that comes to mind. All the component districts of Ulster Boses are smaller districts. I think what you're seeing is we're featuring a lot of what ends up being a larger district in comparison, but, and I don't, I hope this doesn't sound wrong, but what districts aren't bigger than the ones in Sullivan County? So we believe that, you know, we're going to get down, we're going to get our hands dirty, we're going to listen to what you need, and we're going to take the same iterative and collaborative process that we would take with our larger school district.
Frankly, a lot of our New Jersey work tends to count of all.
I think the referendum timeline that we were provided seems reasonable and logical.
With regards to the field, everything depends on finding data, so the geotechnical service, especially. So we would recommend geotechnical, so it will work, it would be boring all around the area. That's going to help us find those materials. So rock. So what's that? Geotechnical service.
Geotechnical services, we hire a consultant on behalf of the district with the CM, or the district hires a geotechnical engineering consultant directly, and we work with them.
And then when it comes to unforeseen conditions during construction, we also incorporate a lot of allowances into our projects so that when something comes up, because it always does, we don't have x-ray vision, and we have those allowances so that we can pull from the allowances.
Yeah, we'll work with the construction manager to have unit pricing on things that may be unforeseen, the amount of asbestos work that you might need. So getting pricing upfront to give you cost control measures. Talking about unit pricing and specifics of, perhaps you're doing masonry cleaning and you have a square footage and it's defined, and then we find out, hey, we did know that we weren't going to do this area, but we also need to do that area. If we put on the bid document, on the bid form, cost per square foot for a unit masonry cleaning, you can always buy up if you have the money in an allowance or contingency. Or if we bid the work and it comes in under your budget, you'll have some surplus funding. Perhaps you can add scope by doing. So we're very thorough in the way we approach a bid process. There are multiple alternates, usually deductions and adds. We'll work with the CM to define what some of the unit costs could be so that we can figure out what our appropriate allowance should be, and we'll recommend having an allowance on each individual.
Thank you.
Kristen?
I have nothing.
I'm going to answer all of your questions. That's not fair.
So I'm a site civil guy, so. So is there, in your field experience, any district that has the topography issues that we have? You've been thinking about retaining walls or how do you do it one side?
We did some, we did some great, I mean, we did some great in Goshen, we did some great in Monroe. That upper tiered field required some retaining walls. Typically, a lot of the walls that we've done have been sprayed up with replacements on the field that are already there. So you don't necessarily really need that. Obviously, we can accommodate the grading. It's easy for me to grade it on paper. It's the budget and how it affects the cost of the field. So the trick with this one would be how to massage the overall area where we can get what you want on there and minimize the amount of fill that's required. And obviously minimizing retaining walls is a big cost savings. I tend to lean toward grading because grading is permanent and a retaining wall is expensive and eventually will fail after some number of years. So my preference is if you have the land, do the grading, and that way it will be that way forever. So yes, we do a lot of grading, but this one is, it is a particularly challenging one, but more of a challenge.
Your concern is not unique to athletic fields, right? It's translatable to any site that has a significant topography change. And we've worked on a lot of project sites that are hilly, that have major topography changes, that require a lot of site design, require a lot of stormwater drainage design, require a lot of retaining walls. And although our resume and our body of work doesn't necessarily reflect that in athletic fields, if we were to show you some of the other more complex projects, some healthcare facilities, under plus million dollar projects, you could see that there are significant site challenges that we have designed.
But as I've said, you're blessed with a lot of land, so we have the room to work with. How do we do it the most possible way?
Good. Did you include any retaining wall pricing in your budget?
We included the design retaining walls in our preliminary PIS. So we've offered a price, a range at first, right? And as we narrow down the scope of work, as we work through the pre-referendum services, we'll conclude with a final price. So we really know how many retaining walls are left. We feel like our site design number is adequate to designing retaining walls based on what we know. If it gets more substantial than that, we'll have to have a discussion. I don't think it will. I think what we've shown in our site design number and our fee is representative of a complete design. But you could surprise us and tell us you want to do something different. Our due diligence could say, hey, we don't need to do this, or we shouldn't do it this way, and things could change, and we may have to take a different approach.
We do a bit house structural that does the retaining wall designs, so unless it's something really outlandish, I don't anticipate.
Okay, good. So what's your process to prevent change orders and RFIs?
Well, some change orders are inevitable. So having the right bid provisions in place to make sure that we can control the costs of the unforeseen are our most important defense mechanism, if you will. RFIs are necessary, so we don't want to limit the amount of RFIs. In fact, you know, as a construction manager, I'm sure Bob could appreciate this, we typically recommend using an online resource like Submittal Exchange to share RFIs, to streamline the process so there's not people moving from point A to point C as part of that process. So we're very versed in multiple online sources, Procore, Prima Vara, Submittal Exchange, or a few of the ones that we've used in the past. RFIs come in digitally. We take a look at them, we triage them, and in accordance with our contract, we respond to the RFIs within the predetermined timeframe. If not, a lot sooner, because we don't want people leaving.
Good.
I think we're done.
Relax. Relax. All right. Thanks for coming in.
And try to get a decision out by the end of the day, or by at least, we have a meeting on the 26th.
Okay.
And we'll.
We'll be right in. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you for coming in.
Thanks, guys.
Take care. Good trip back.
That I realized these were honey.
That's right.
So is Scott bringing them in right away, or what? Not yet.
So Scott, after the Felonzer presentation, I'm going to step out and let you guys ask questions about.
Well, we got two more yet, though. Felonzer's next, and then there's another engineer.
Then I'll come back for CSR.
Oh, okay. All right. So they're pretty thorough. That's why they were the first ones in. They were first ones in the meeting the other day, the interviews, and they were, they were really thorough, so. Well, we'll discuss it afterwards.
Hello.
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 Step right over there. You don't know these guys, do you?
I don't.
How you doing?
So in the interest of transparency, I work for Felonzer Engineering, so after the presentation, I'll be, I'll ask one question and then I'll step out and let you guys ask questions without me here. And then I'll come back for the next one.
I can't believe nobody showed up. Nobody showed up.
You're good.
Board president.
Whatever you need.
There you go.
Email those two to Caleb, the district's deputy.
Caleb's not here, but.
I know. But he got late today, but that's.
Okay.
Hello, how are you?
I didn't know if you wanted.
Good to see you.
How you doing tonight?
Sure.
Slightly updated, so you can put more paper.
Thank you.
Turn mine off.
Is your field?
Mm-hmm.
Over. Full size.
No, it's just to see the bank.
Is your field underneath with overlay of a full-size field?
Yes.
Let's see if you can.
All right, just so I'm clear, timing-wise, what do we have?
Our 20-minute presentation in about 15, 20 minutes for answers and questions from the board. Trying to keep it to a 40, 45 minutes.
Perfect. Ready, Chris?
Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you very much for having us and shortlisting us on this important project. My name is Mark Felonzer. I'm principal at Felonzer Engineering. With me, I have Brian Felonzer, DE, Site Civil Engineer, Armon Chani from KSQ, and Andy Brim from LaBella. So we're going to go through a little bit of our experiences. Now, the PowerPoint they're going to show is all in this, so you're welcome to look at it or not look at it, but you'll have it for later should you have any questions or want to review anything. So Felonzer Engineering, we're established in 1956 by my father. The company's grown. It's a mechanical, electrical, plumbing, site civil firm, and we lead a lot of team work. So this is a team operation, most of our projects are. We round out the team with the highest qualified professionals to serve our clients. We're currently, our staff is about 30 people. In terms of the key personnel for this project, I am the principal in charge of the project. My brother.
All right, just so I'm clear, timing-wise, what do we have?
Our 20-minute presentation in about 15, 20 minutes for answers and questions from, from the board. Trying to keep it to a 40, 45 minutes.
Perfect. Ready for a second?
Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you very much for having us and shortlisting us on this important project. My name is Mark Felonzer, I'm principal at Felonzer Engineering. With me I have Brian Felonzer, D E, Site Civil Engineer, Armon Ching from K S Q, and Andy Brim from LaBella. So, so, we're going to go through a little bit of our experiences. Now, the PowerPoint they're going to show is all in this, so you're welcome to look at it or not look at it, but you'll have it for later should you have any questions or want to review anything. So, Felonzer Engineering, we're established in 1956 by my father. The company's grown into a mechanical, electrical, plumbing, site civil firm, and we lead a lot of team work. So, this is a team operation, most of our projects are. We round out the team with the highest qualified professionals to serve our clients. We're currently, our staff is about 30 people. In terms of the key personnel for this project, I am the principal in charge of the project. My brother John is the alternate principal on this project. We have a senior project manager, Dan Steinberg. And then, in terms of the other support staff you'll see listed for various of the other smaller projects that we have, a key role in this from our office standpoint will be Brian. He'll be handling all the stormwater management on the project, stormwater design. And then, I'll let Armon speak a little bit about his firm and then.
Hi, Armon, I'm from K S Q, Architect, K S Q Design. Our firm's core business model is serving K-12 public schools in New York State from passing the bond to closing it out with the S E P at the end. We're, we're super specialized in public school bid, WICs, law, education program planning. We're super big listeners, we like to engage with stakeholders, listen and design, in this case, a uniquely Eldridge solution for each, Eldridge rather, tolerance for each of the assignments that we pick. Really, really grateful to be here and thank.
And I'm Andy Brim from LaBella Associates. We're about 1,300 persons per, throughout New York State. Formerly chasing companies, but went through the naysayers in this geography as of last year or became part of LaBella. I personally have been working a lot with this team, Elder School District, doing a lot of focus work on K S Q 12, and I've been working effectively to do a lot of municipal projects, but one of my deep passions is athletic facilities and what you hear is that some of the excitement that has been bringing through, you know, that's what I was working to do. So, we'll go through a little of that later, but internally, we've got a really great team of strategy, I think, because we have all the subtle people, we're used to doing all the field type work, any of the site work ourselves, but when we have the local knowledge and the local power, we're a partner of that, that we're really excited about.
And we do that across the boards. Currently, we're in the middle of redesigning the plane for West Point, so, Jason is working with us closely on it. In terms of the org charts, engineering's always the org chart, so you can see how it falls out, you can see your point of contact, you can see that it'll be organized, you're always welcome to call myself directly, cell number, keeping out all, all our clients. Dan Steinberg, again, is going to handle global because of all the electrical, chemical, other smaller projects, and Brian will really be a key role in terms of the day-to-day context as we get into especially the stormwater. We've got a lot of site with stormwater on this. In terms of some of the projects that were, we've done, a lot of school district work, obviously, over the years, some ones more local that you, we did the enlarged city school district, we did the stadium there as part of our work, and we also were able to get them a large incentive funding on their new elementary school from Iserda. Some of the other projects I'll let Armon talk about, and some of the districts are working together.
So, the images highlighted in red are four families with K S Q partnered districts. Where you see multiple numbers would help school districts pass multiple bonds. We tend to build long and enduring relationships with school districts, and when you check references, you know, call org members, the superintendent business manager, like the superintendent of Lindsay grounds, we really are proud of our relationships and our track I wanted to just mention real quickly, some of the methodology that we use to help school districts pass bond, in, in recent projects that we've worked on, we've established pillars, and these are three that sort of apply to the, the needs that you have here in Eldred. The idea is that these are mission critical needs that, that pass through this, lift this nest and make it into the final bond. And then this messaging with the pillars have actually, you know, made it to district postcards that were handed out, we have, we have QR codes on the postcard so we can get from your smartphone to the district's digital file that has all the materials about this school district. Sometimes there's a fourth pillar that talks about America's visibility or ADA access could be a pillar about security. Once we engage with you and meet and talk, we can sort of refine that approach. And then these illustrations are purposely generic so that a voter can't, can't disagree. So, if we, if we design a building on the front, well, I like a pitch group, or if we design the, you know, the fieldhouse with a ground group, I don't like ground groups. So, so we try to make the messaging and speak for itself, and I think the more homework I do to help Eldred and work with Caleb, I'm really confident we can pass a bond here. You've really done good homework, so just get things ready after that happens.
Sure, and this is just an overview, obviously, so we see where the, in terms of the field, obviously, with a lot of other projects, but, you know, the field represents so many challenges, the topography and all, that, that we are going to focus a little bit on that as part of tonight's presentation. But we're not losing sight of the other important elements. Groups are very important, obviously, key number one, you've got to keep your buildings dry, otherwise they will self-destruct. So, Armon, a little bit more on this.
Yeah, I'd like to start.
Okay, sure.
So, here's just a little bit of our experience with K S Q 12 for, for turf, but that's all recent projects. The first six that are highlighted on the left-hand side, those are all projects that we've done with K S Q as our, as our leading team member. The two that are going on right now are an Annuity Union Preschool District that's started construction yesterday for a new tractor field in North Cell, and we started construction and construction will be going full bore this, this summer, and it's a multi-sport synthetic turf field. So, what it highlights is, out of our other district offices, we've got, we probably are averaging about four, four, four projects in here, and so, we're learning about the experiences, you know, everything is fluid, the industry's changing, and I can show you some of the materials in a little bit, but the process of going through those projects when it comes to athletics, they're, they can be a really complex process, but we're really learning well how to, to guide all of the state chambers parts of that. This, this is just an example, you can read through it, maybe you find that's a North Sample, North Sample project. A project that's probably not that dissimilar to on the stormwater side, you sell the immediate infiltration basin on that for stormwater, given your Class A, Class B soils and everything that's, that's going on here and the lack of free development, if you didn't, probably looking at something like that. So, this is a good graphic of that. A picture of Annuity, really the imagery on here, Annuity had the full, full process. What's really nice to highlight on here is, if you look at the image, it's all scrumptious in a way, graphically, but fields, there's very standard colors, very standard, you know, dimensions on a lot of fields. There's a lot you can do, this is what the field's going to look like for Annuity, and it's an alteration of the color scheme, never really tailored for the district, tailored for your sports. So, this is just a different take on that. The process that really we found to be a great help for our districts in allowing less to choose what they want and how they want it, but into the project and then the use of corporate purchasing agreements. It's something that 10 years ago was hardly ever done. Now, with corporate purchasing state contracts as a legal mechanism to essentially interview and sole source the products that you want. So, for instance, this is a matrix that shows A-Turf, Field Turf, Shaw Sports Turf, pre-premier manufacturers of synthetic turf. What we were able to do with both our Annuity and North Cell clients is, we brought those vendors to the table, gave them, worked with the, with the stakeholders and the district board members to figure out what are our parameters that they're looking for, what's right for them and for their, their field. Once we did that, we're able to bring those people, they would let them present so that you all would have the information, you know, firsthand, and then got a comparative price point from them. This locks in what you, what you expected and what you're going to get for a product. We did the same thing for a field, like, like, must go state contract for these projects. Your track, we ended up with a selecting crack call on the Annuity project, which is the old pulp and company. But there's other vendors, we brought those multiple track vendors, interviewed them, the district selected a crack call for that. And then the test water servicing, same thing, Action Track, which was direct through a crack call, interviewed a couple of different firms for that. And so, essentially, you end up getting Grant Sands Bleachers, that was Dan Clayton, ended up with a cover of a contract. But it's a mechanism to allow you as the community, you support, saying, this is what we're getting, and you're going to get that, and it takes out the potential risk associated with a low bid, you know, a fairer low bid of a project. You know, to make and control time as well. So, I think those are really important strategies to think of when you're thinking about time to market, point can you put the field in, impacts to your, your sports seasons along the way, how do you align all that, all the construction management side, you know, I think that's all, that are really beneficial for our clients.
I think dealing with changing contractors, they're much more used to this now, some of the larger contractors in the area, voice excavating, that would be certainly interested in this project. You know, they're comfortable with the procurement being done this way. So, I think that's an interesting way to help the district save money, know what they're getting in timing. Today, we have to add to everything now. Is it available? Timing, when can we get it? How long is it going to take? I mean, that's the supply chain that's hitting the construction industry probably harder than many industries, not everywhere, but, but that's an important thing to, that is now, you know, one more dimension that architects and engineers look at closely. Obviously, construction managers every day, you know, that's a problem, can I get it? When can I get it? How early do I have to lock it up? So, I think that's important.
We just finished an $18.5 million bond with 100 business schools, the bond with this team, who work pretty seamlessly together, we understand how to collaborate with Savin, so you're, you're bringing on a few, we're complimenting a team that goes on our credit. This was also, a stadium existed for the bleachers and a track, but we replaced everything with, it was natural turf, but it's synthetic turf. We helped pick everything, the scoreboard, the colors of the bleachers, the steps, the risers, the windscreen, like, we really are prepared to dig in and make sure you get exactly what works for you and maybe athletic career for style.
And just some of the other fields, I'm going to roll through these a little quickly, but you see some visuals on other projects we've worked with. And certainly, you mentioned ADA, ADA access parking, that should really be looked at as part of this project. Obviously, you have a lot of grade changes, so that should be looked at, how to, that can be dealt with to allow full accessibility to your field. Beacon City Schools, again, another project that we've worked on, you know, the lighting that's necessary for lighting. The middle town, the stadium, so it's my own, my own, by the way. And the stadium, working on the project, doing a lot of work with the school district, but, you know, they really turned that into, one of the driving forces there was, you know, better, really quality athletic facility and multiple facilities actually keep students more engaged, they have less dropout rates with better sports programs. So, it's kind of been interesting, Dr. Eastwood, I think, is a leader in a lot of that, and he's very good at leveraging money. Here's a couple of projects right now, these fields have just been, just getting ready to be opened up, it's a soccer sports complex in Chester, New York, two lighted full-size soccer fields, there's more humming, baseball, there's going to be a large indoor facility, 2,000 square feet, and that's right on the corner of Chester, so that's underway right now. One of the main things why we wanted to present this project was stormwater, that's a big deal. We actually did underground retention chambers, Spontec minutes, so, it's all being impervious, if I'm a generator by the impervious, it gets collected in the parking lot, and the field, if it gets stored in the chamber, but it's held to eight inches for over 24 hours, that's either 100 years' length, which would be for a project that, that, that's, that's charging. I made breakfast, did I forget? Too many, too many. That's for second design, very, very volatile for soils, so.
When we met last week, Dr. Morgano mentioned that the addition, in addition to renovating the elements, we'll collaborate, there's going to be a makerspace on the side, and so we've done many, many, many makerspaces than I shared earlier. The investment is more in the furniture and the lighting, we, we want to invest in, you know, the textures and the colors and so on, but we really try not to break the budget on these kinds of spaces, and you see that where we've done this successfully, project tables, project-based learning, we'll collaborate with your educators and you can bring these spaces along your shoulders.
Roofing, obviously roofing's very important, as I said, so our firm's K S Q, there's a lot of roofing, we do paramount roofing, so we'll work together to make sure we produce a good quality, long-lasting. Anything that's there, you've got to get the water off of it.
This is the book of Orpik.
But these are the kind of problems you see in it. My rural Berry School District, we did many roofs for them over the years, and, and the fellow buildings. And Armon also poses, that was a very unique project, changed Ardena Hospital into a Rosa Building, very fast timed thing. I mean, for my part, it took a leadership role in meetings, coordinating, getting it nailed, so that I served rebate incentive for energy efficient building, and we reviewed some of the hospital systems for a lot of mechanicals. So, I don't want to lose light, you have a lot of other little projects, they're all important. Our firm does code reviews for State Education Department, done that for many years as a outsourcing for them, so they trust us with the code reviews on it. We're very much into codes, making sure everything is safe, make sure it works right, and, you know, we stand by our work, so. And that's the second picture of the facility. Lighting, we set us back at night, or lighting the D, parking lots, sidewalks, a lot of things associated with it. North Cell Boiler Plant, so we like, we like boiler plants to look at. We find that exciting. And not quite going to say thank you for listening yet, but thank you for the formal presentation, we really want to get into some of the, the turfs, I want to save some time for that, because I'm sure you just did in turf sites, right?
One of the things, yeah, one of the things we wanted to just eliminate here at today's interview is, we took this, an aerial image of the school, and we'd heard that the desire to have at least 200 feet, you know, wide on the soccer track, that you've got a, a small track, it's not 400 meter track, you want to make that a legitimate track, prefer to have an eight lane track system, have multi-sports, even though you aren't playing every sport all the time, but have that ability and capability for doing that. So, we took a prototype from, from a, from another district and overlaid it on the site plan, just to see, you know, it's hard to just look at an aerial or stand up there, you know, to look and see what the turf differentiation is. So, this plan, and they think they can hand it out to you. So, you can see that I just put an eight lane straight on there, the sub-tracks have an eight lane straight with the six, six lanes around each for the, the smaller distance events. And then, we have a 200-foot, you know, soccer field by 360, full football, and then some of the tractor field events either in the D zone or on the outside. And you can see the difference in the relationship that we're pushing out, you know, what, what appears to be a middle, you know, 100 feet, if not further, down in the woods and off that bank. So, it's, and even on the, on the southern side, you know, it drops off real severe and we're pushing that out the width of the track plus, so you're really pushing that out almost 40 feet down the bank. So, when you think of that in a perspective, it's pretty drastic. And so, what we would do is, the first, first take is, this is the 30-minute exercise, you know, we would take the, the time, we would want to be really thoughtful about what are our options, just explore all of our options. You know, the East West Field orientation versus the North South, you know, what, what can we do, multiple levels, how do we, how do we balance this the best for, for today and for 20 years from now, as you, as you think the guidance of the district is going to go. And so, this, just we thought would be handy. This is a 300-seat bleacher, I've heard that, you know, you're looking for a little bit more capacity than that potentially. You know, if you're, if you're up against a bank like this, you end up using a pure bleacher system, if you're on a level spot, you can use, you know, more of a, an erector set, you know, on skids, so to speak, how Loomis stands is what Dan Clayton calls it. But that's just for you to have, to look at, think about. This, we don't want to waste a lot of your time, but it's really important just to see some different textures, and you can come and take a look at this. This happens to be an SBR product with a, a really nice turf field. Here, these are different types of grasses, I can pass this around, it's just quite educational thing potentially, this, start here, okay. This is a Thatch product, where you can kind of see that it looks like the, the ground is a little bit more like real grass might be. This is a mono filament of two different styles, you can see some of the backing that goes along with this. So, this is, there's hundreds of options. You know, our job is to help guide you through that process of picking what is the best option. Two and a quarter inch height grass plays faster. People feel lucky as a prominent sport in our district, they love that.
You saw them last week.
Yeah, people love like multi-sports, let's say football's king or soccer's king, they might choose a different system that's better for them.
You want these, Amiga?
You want these, Amadur?
These are, these are two different examples of a shock pad or absorption pad. We've heard a lot of G-MAX testing. That's really the critical test that you do periodically for your field to make sure your field is safe and playable for, for your children. This is an older styrofoam product that uses very much. Just happen to have one in the office. This is a more of a rubber-style pad, and others you'll see look more like your traditional carpet pad that you might have in your house. It's very similar construction stuff, but those are different choices.
Okay. Amadur, you want to go first for questions?
Yeah, if I could. So I'll, I'll ask a question and then I'm going to step out and let them ask theirs without me here. So how would your team either minimize or eliminate change orders?
The secret for these public school projects is, is pre-planning, making sure that we get really good direction from the school district, we engage really well, and then we prepare quality construction documents together. So this is a team that's been doing this for a long time together. So it's, it's a brilliant amount of pre-planning and then how we support the construction managers in the field where we're typically at least once a week. We're, we're trying to see around the corners. We're also going to be really critical of the contractors that are hired. We will typically, either one or the three of us will fall in those contractors, so we'll know what their tricks are, if you will. And I'm just confident that if there are change orders, they'll be from unforeseeable or discovered condition. So like, for example, we saw that when we were surveying, you know, the, the, between the baseball field and the, and the upper stadium. We can, we can, you know, competitively bid to unit cost or move the rock and so on, but we don't always know exactly how much rock they have to remove.
Even with the soil. That is due for. So investigation, critical soil forms, and the inside the buildings, you know, existing conditions, existing conditions, existing conditions. You got to be willing, our engineers are willing, you got to be willing to get in deep up ceilings, you know, or pipes, so that you can help them minimize. That's part of, you know, while you add sometimes rock, according to how many corings, we'll recommend a number of corings so that we'll really get a good picture of what's under there and the type of materials, obviously. And you'll be really careful on what types of soils are under there. That's important. Store soils, move soils, soils, you know, you can't just push soils off and build on top. It may, you know, it may not be the right way to do it. Obviously, you don't want that. So I think, you know, existing conditions, outside a building, inside a building, critical. And when you get that and you get your documents really clean and very accurate, that's the first step for minimizing all change. And then, yeah, your construction manager's critical for that as well. I think some, it's a little bit of attitude with the contractors to make sure they understand that it's a fair amount, they're going to be paid a fair amount, but not something that they should be hoping for. We control it and we fight hard for your money, right? So we fight hard so that your money is not spent and wasted. 200 many years, we're local, we're here. I am with Sullivan County, 25 minutes away, you know, we're here and available so that we can help support that, you know? Doesn't really matter what day of the week it is, sometimes these issues come up and they seem to be, have to be dealt with right away. So we will support the district to do that. We're proud of our documents, we don't leave much to do, anything to be, you know, for misunderstanding.
And part of the volatility that's going on right now in work, that's, you see it every day, you know, everything changes, lead times and all that. It's paying really most attention to that on the design side, not just saying that's the job, that's the deal, of working hand-in-hand with that. And that's why the government, the quantum purchasing contracts, whether there's multiple numbers, that's actually been an ability for us to lock in pricing slightly for price increases, because the woman who builds, you know, it only takes a week for something to all of a sudden be a $30,000 delta, when you talk about large clients. So we've been able to lock in some pricing. You know, I'm not saying that's how you have to go, or it's definitely slammed up the way you've got to go by any means, but that's a mechanism that we're always looking at in order to cost control for the unknown.
And some flexibility, some things are really strange now. Just had a job bid for a church, actually, a boiler replacement. Contract that came back and said, look, we can't get this boiler for, you know, 16 weeks. We just can't get it anymore. Said, I'll give you two boilers, twins, stage, the same price. And I said, I think the owner would be very receptive of that. He says, it's going to cost me a little bit more, but except to do the job now, I'm going to do it. And that's it. So a little bit of flexibility and understanding, and so they're, the jerks actually get a little better in that particular case.
You good, Amadur?
Hi, just one other question. So with the field, is there been any fields where you've dealt with this kind of topography? Where you've thought about either retaining walls or other things?
All of them. Every, every site's challenging, I think, because even school districts are trying to find those paper. And outdoor activities and outdoor athletics are just a more and more popular space is getting, I come back to North Hill, we're blasting 3,000 cubic yards of rock, make a point here. So that's a significant investment. At Nanyu, we have a very similar problem. Their field was too narrow inside of their elongated track. So they want to go an equal quantum track and make it bigger so they can play the field sports in the middle. They pushed my track out basically the width of the track, about 30 feet. At the edge of the track right now, there's about five feet of grass, chain link fence, slopes down to two, we're about four feet up. So now we have a large, big block wall. We had an engineer in the vault that not have any grid reinforcement in the deck because there's a 60-inch pounding sewer running right behind the things, but any kind of act ties coming through that. But we got that in, that's going in. We had the work to get that material secured ahead of time this past two months because of the 400 feet length, you know, 12 feet tall, you know, and so that one was done that way. So just about every project's going to have those, you know? And here, your balance is, is earthwork, you know, rolls the day where you start your formal platform, really. And everything else that is more vulnerability, it's like dirt cushion this much generally, you know, aggregate discussion this much, asphalt cushion this much. Right, like I told those additional factors here, that's where we would have to focus because it will be challenging. Little, I don't think, but generally.
We had recommended in the first interview, please do soil cores and photographic, detailed photographic at the app, and then we can embed the cost before we go out. That's going to be one of the keys to this success.
Stay, stay.
What is your marketing philosophy as it pertains to helping ensure successful bond booking?
So certainly we are investing in the relationship during the pre-bond effort. That's code for we don't give a thing. And, and so we are very, 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 we give your bond, that's. We request to have a voice at the table to share our experiences. You're the boss, like we're, you know, we're not going to ever tell you what to do, but we're going to share our experience. And then also, you know, Mr. Berice has a lot of experience as a boss. We have, you have a great, a great team to support you. But I don't know, so we do everything, everything in the book. Like I've, I've had, you know, where we use the board meetings as platforms, formal community committees, and we engage with the excellent superintendent, the Rotary Club, senior citizens, like, you know, whatever it takes. And there's not a one size fits all. We have to design the L grid program to see that we take the information to them. That's the key. We don't expect that everyone's going to come to a meeting, everyone's going to look online, but how do we get the information out to them to make sure it's quality?
That was the correct answer.
No, I mean, this is, this is, for us and that, right, I mean, that's what we do, you know, and we get it, we understand how to force it.
What do you feel is a realistic timeline for our project?
Well, I think your plan depends kind of when you're, like, as I understand now, you're thinking about the bond booking. So as soon as it's approved, there are some projects you can do pretty quickly, you can set them off to do in the summer. Little bit depends on SED review times, run fairly good right now, but that kind of changes. So there are some projects that, you know, are obviously separate from that, that can be really looked at and so that you can, you know, voters approve things, we want to see progress, right? And we want to progress, progress the project. So I think some of the projects specifically can be done to that. Go ahead and put out the, the bid, approval bid, you know, board, and we'll have to look at material availability for some, obviously sidewalks, concrete's available, you know, roofing can be available, the tank replacement possibly, you know, it'll be the lead time on the tanks. But they could certainly be bid and get set up to go and then hopefully timing that works. I think that certainly the sports field, probably according to what I did with discussion available, it's kind of like, we're going to lose a sport for fall or spring. It, it sounds like the spring is maybe the, the time period to lose because the track is really not fully usable for your team. So that would push it obviously until the bottom of the year, but it would allow for getting materials, getting things lined up, getting commitments, you know, do a really good bidding on it, you know? Today, I think that, you know, with some of the challenges we have, hopefully some of that will be, you know, dissipated a little bit over time and spike in the future, hopefully. Probably, very, it's a baby, you know?
You asked me about the vote date.
I'm sorry, what was that?
You asked me about the vote date.
I was not.
I'm sorry.
So barring any supply chain issues, as you previously mentioned, do you feel that, are there any challenges that you feel our demographics specifically will pose during this project?
No, I don't think so. You know, we speak to contractors all the time. I, you know, we talk to them, get input on what's going on. I think, you know, I think they'll be well, well-received. Usually what you find is, so people worry about, you know, things are busy or whatever. Projects like this, and projects that are fully designed, you know, contractors get interested in their bid, they know the timeframe of them. We always have a lot of bidders that want to bid on the project, right? Because they're, they're dealing with timeframes that are out of luck. It's not like tomorrow.
Right.
So it's really not been a problem for us to have bidders and for having, you know, competitive pricing, you know, even in today's market, we see a little more swing. But what we're seeing now is, you know, some more outliers. The guys are too busy to really bid correctly, you know? But we'll see, you bid at the three or four, you see two prices in where they should be, be one a little higher, maybe an outlier, or someone will not bid, you think?
Okay.
Really not a bad problem.
Thank you.
Good. Kristen?
She covered it.
Yeah. All right, well, thanks for coming in. Appreciate you taking the time and we might have a decision tonight. We have a board meeting the 26th, and there'll be definitely a decision by then.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, so this is, this is a predictable, same rubber mix, it's like 80% of the same. It's still done this way in the United States. That's, that's recycled rubber and sand. Yep. This is a blacky panel, and this is a green panel, and inside of here, there's actually another green EPA that is a bigger crystal. That's where the EPA, there's, there's been a lot of studies done, there are researches. It's not funded one way or another, but it's definitely out there in the conversation. So these are two versions of basically two products, but they're not recycled. This is a product that people were starting to try to, one of the companies puts this out, other sets of layers, they call it Cool Play because they tried to tell this and say that it basically allows, puts a lower temperature, will heat up quite somewhat. More similar, actually, one of the, the, the sand, the sand is probably a positive, very, very similar to this, because that particular district, they, they were a little concerned, very concerned with that. And they follow organic fills. This is like coconut fiber, and it's kind of like sawdust. You know, the problem with these is they're not proved, they haven't been, and some have floated, and it hasn't been around long enough to really get a good feed. This is, just quickly, is two versions of a track surface. This is actually, this is called, yes, that's one on there, this is a three. Reversely, this one is purpose, water will go through this. Water will go through this. This one is, we just bid it as an ultimate, and the bid's getting low enough, I'm going to try to pull over this.
Oh, yeah. I watched the building.
What they did, they pretty much took where the baseball field is, they pushed it right down.
Is that what they did?
Football field.
Yeah, I see the rock there, but I don't know how much is down below. There's some other tricks, like the block wall, you ever see something, not just block, we also do where you, you know, these like large foam blocks?
Right.
That are the fill.
Yeah.
They compress. Now, I don't know if I want to put my track over, but, you know, outside of that, it's okay.
If you got a 15-year-old tee, or 15-year-old usual length of track, so then if it's the same capital project, when you're tearing out your field, you're doing a track. So it's part of the logic of paying upfront or something. But it really matters, you know, if you, if you're trying to get the most paper to go for your project, when you're talking about buildings and everything else, and not just a field, you know, sometimes you have to hedge your bets or go with something that says, you know, we can, we can, you know, supplement that money later on.
It's something that's already consequences.
It works in any district until somebody brings up the topic. It's something to do, it's very hard to disprove because nobody can prove it accurate and nobody can prove it to be inaccurate, and it's all hard for a board member to say, well, I don't think that will lead to any case study. And so we've had this, this is the name. So this ended up being about a, I think it was 40,000 dollars, health it? Now we had to pay the premium. You don't want to introduce something. Fun stuff. All right, thank you.
Have a safe trip back, we'll see you later.
Thanks.
And special projects.
What's that?
No, we changed his title. The special projects are whatever I need them to.
If I need the bathroom break, got three minutes.
Actually, you got eight, 40, 45 minutes would be 20, but they never got set up to 10 of us, so.
Bob? Bob? Okay.
Yeah.
You can't go wrong with any of the three.
What's that?
You can't go wrong with any of the three.
We're all capable.
We wouldn't have brought them to the board if they weren't.
It's just making that decision.
Yeah. It's a matter of who you feel more comfortable with.
Yeah.
You're ridiculous.
What? Yeah.
You can't go wrong with any of the three.
No.
What's that?
You can't go wrong with any of the three.
Yeah, we're all capable.
We wouldn't have brought them to the board if they weren't.
It's just making that decision.
Yeah. It's a matter of who you feel more comfortable with.
Yeah.
Hi. Welcome back. How you doing?
Hey, good over there.
Good to see you.
You know them, Homer? You know them? You know the person, you know the lady, too? No. Thanks for coming down. So we try to keep it about twenty, twenty minutes presentation and have some answers and little conversation, questions and stuff like that.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, we're going to be, all right. Jordan? So I certainly appreciate being with you tonight. My name is Tom Renssens Daller. I'm with CSR, I'm Executive Principal with CSR. I manage the Newburgh office. So we have offices both in Albany and Newburgh. With me, I have Bill Croll. He was listed as our Sub-Consultant with the LA Group. They're very familiar with your field, field projects. My associate, she is our Director of Interior Design. We start talking about maker space and libraries. So just quickly about the team and your proposals. We have a team outlined as, obviously, Elveston School District, CSR does the prime, and then we have the LA Group handling environmental, catastrophe or structural, there's a structural team. As with any project, we don't know until we get into it. So just quickly about CSR. Really, we made our name in education, public education from 1991. That was when the birth was born, celebrating our thirtieth anniversary of class member. We've been in this thirty years, we have sixty employees across the two offices, do architecture, engineering, and we also have a construction team. Eighty-five percent of our work is in public education, pre-k as well. We also do work in higher education and institutional, fire emergency response facilities, but all I understand is that we're, it's always been public education. We work with over one hundred thirty-five school districts in their state and we have a very high success rate of bond reference. We've had ninety-three percent passing on the first try and second try we've had a hundred percent. Never been, it issued fail. And some of the accolades for the company, but the one most proud is we're normally listed as one of the best places to work in capital region. They don't have that down in the Newburgh region, but we're very well listed as one of the best places to work and that's by survey of your employees. Very proud of that fact. We like the fact that our employees love where they work. So I'm going to let Joe start off and really talk a little bit about the backfield.
Okay, we'll zoom in this picture a little for the after this to give better, closer look at that. But essentially what we're looking at is taking your existing three hundred meter track and extending that to the company four hundred meter regulation size track. And that's going to take quite a bit of expansion of the area. This is one of the most narrow tracks that you can go with, it's a lateral track. And you'll see we're expanding both into the wooded area as well as over here to the hillside. How we situated in here is really going to depend on the grandstand to go in, how many rows you're looking to get, how many seats you're looking to get. And you give us the part to consider, whether this be a top loading system or a bottom loading system. In a, where is majority of your spectators going to be entering the grants? Will it be from the track level or will it be from further up on the top side?
It may be further down if, because we have to add parking and it depends where we add the parking.
Yeah. And then another part to tie into that would be the concession and toilet building. Locating that and tying it in with general service. And then within the track, we'll also be looking at putting in a synthetic turf field. Yeah, that's some other thing we have to look at. We've got existing athletic field lighting with the lighting of the track, the enlargement of the track. We may be able to utilize and maintain two of those holes, but definitely you can't keep all four holes in the same location. But that's the fun part of the project, we've been into it all over our sleeves, is seeing what all the options are and getting you a final layout that's really going to work for us.
And just, we've certainly worked together with the LA Group for quite some time. We've done a lot of field projects with them in all different configurations, whether they be re curbs or whether they be random fields. We're actually doing a project involving right now is putting in a random field, but with bleachers concession, very similar to what your circumstances out here, where they're using graves with bleachers dropped out. They're creating an effect for the new field. They had to increase the size of their footprint to accommodate the effect. So very similar to that. And then, of course, along with that, we've got a lot of different, a lot of different variations of concession and toilet facilities. Again, remember this facility is based on the casket of your bleacher. So the size of that building will vary depending on how many you want to serve in the bleachers. One here, we're looking at, again, very similar to what your track is going to be for the game, which is the top side, a top side press box on the bleachers stepped down to the track and the football field. And then you can see the technical, that's in Pearl River. And then, of course, roof replacement. You know, roof replacement at Kent's Elementary School is certainly probably overdue at this point. Been around since I was younger, about ten, twelve years ago. So when we inherited the area, so we've got a significant amount of roofing at this speed, the whole thing do on a regular basis. Obviously, we do a lot of infrastructure projects for all of our, for all of our clients. You see in the top right, Parkstown, we re-roofed, I believe, just about every one of them. In their last big fall ever. And that's actually a project that we're getting ready to do. The next for the, well. So we actually want to talk a little bit about the library, the reader space.
Yeah. So I've been with CSR for, coming up on six years now. And I think that probably any project that we renovated a library really makes the most transformative. So this was a project we worked with, brought up for elementary school, just actually my alma mater. So going back and being able to re-imagine the space of that, I can rub it, turn it, it's really cool. But this space, you know, we know that we still need to accommodate a collection of libraries. It's that space. And that was important, this library, but also starting to, how do we bring in the new technology, the new media part of the space? In this area, we were able to tie into an adjacent classroom, which was really important. So students could go, walk through their stacks, get their books out and use that resource material and start to integrate that into other type of, so whether that be a computer, working with their librarian, and then also having a space in elementary schools important that could be for lecture areas. So this is a little bit more fun, not kind of your traditional classroom layout, but having this reading space right in that library and really close to that.
And I like the concept of potentially combining that with some level of maker space. It's an intriguing idea. You know, districts are trying to create more flexibility with their space, especially with their media settings. And there's no reason that that couldn't be, to some degree, maker space as well. You know, a lot of times we think of maker space as dirty space, wood shops and such, but a lot of, a lot of times it's, you know, robotics, it's a lot of the different other modules that are running the project.
This was highly impactful, which we just completed last summer. And this space really did start to bring in more of that maker space area. So providing storage for the students to put different projects, kind of these different areas, these different zones of the space. So you can see some smaller work here, some more collaborative work, that taller table that can happen here. And then actually providing a little classroom space in the back with different technology access, but then also marker boards that are really easily movable. So it just like all lends itself to how to be creative and how can students start to use this space differently than they would in normal, whatever. We're hearing that term genius bar a lot, so students are getting really familiar with the Apple Store and going in and being able to use their technology. And how does that technology lend itself to that maker space, to that collaborative work? We're seeing that in, you know, a lot of classrooms, but if you don't have the both to be able to provide that maker space, the library is the perfect place because now you've got, instead of just by grandparents, these media technology teachers, they have that knowledge to be able to print. Yeah.
And of course, along with that, all these spaces have a high degree of chargeability, USB inputs, in the furniture systems, it's very well connected. But it's also flexible because then you can arrange it in different configurations to do different types of construction. So sidewalk replacements, again, we do a significant amount of sidewalk replacement. This is actually at Highland School, the stage school library that where we put a whole new bus loop in to rework their ingress, ingress from the school, separate out with the drop off, see if it's from the bus in, and then a port across the front of the building, all new drop zone with the tent and flying sidewalks. I as well. So just a little bit about the capital planning process. You know, obviously, we typically are starting with assessment and that's really an assessment of what your educational vision is, as you approach each of these projects. And also the facilities assessment, what are we starting with? What's the benchmark in the district? That existing condition, you know, we got to put the work into understanding the condition of everything. And then establishing priorities. Now, you've done a lot of those. You've done, I think you've done a significant amount of it and you have some set of projects that you're really looking to accomplish. And then we look at looking at, I don't know, to look at improvement and how it's financed, what the building aid is. We're very focused on, one of my roles is to make sure that I get as much building aid for you as possible. Especially with a site work project, which is incidental. We have to be very aware of how it's being possible and then ultimately, who'll be natural referendum. Did want to point out, certainly there's lots of different ways to find a project. I'm sure you're all well aware of that, so I won't go into that point. But we certainly want to leverage getting as much out of projects of the state's building aid as possible. And then with the referendum, we want to be able to inform your community, right? That's an important part of the services we provide. We want to make sure that we're communicating and we're developing those communication materials for you. So our marketing and business development group is at the district's disposal to develop all these materials. This is, this is one example of what they did for High Park. We do all of the referendum materials for communication, so that includes videos. I've done radio programs. We do handouts, mailers, postcards, you know, poster boards. All of that is developed with our, with our marketing folks. We're very graphically inclined and then we give them, of course, all the rendering and different things. Of course, that we work with you, your financial consultants, gather all of the financial picture of the referendum so that you can clearly communicate that to the community so that they understand the need and they can hopefully support it in that regard. And of course, we attend any of the public sessions as well. I think that's all in the bag. I doubt that you have many questions.
Go ahead, Stacy.
So you actually answered a lot of the questions that I would have asked you regarding marketing, so I'm just going to dive right into the technical aspect. What specific challenges do you feel our topography may present as you move forward with the project?
We didn't have that, or you don't want to figure that out?
I think the biggest two, one you already said is the topography. We're working on a plateau kind of area and it's very limited space. I believe you're already aware that one of the best ways to expand that space is to lower that plateau. That'll essentially give you the materials you need to bring up the outer edges, but also that'll expand the inner area. The other part is just having the physical space between the property line, between the hillside there. That's where working with different configurations of the track itself is going to be very beneficial. And again, like I mentioned before, the configuration of not only the track, but the grandstand bleachers and how that relates to the track. Right now, you have your long jump and your pole vault right along that straightaway. When we widen that track, it's going to allow those events to go into what we call the D zones, the rounded ends on, just inside the track, between the track and the synthetic turf field, which will open up that space for your grandstand. But one thing to be very aware is because of the topography, one big chunk of the budget for the site is likely to go to retaining walls. We try to avoid them as much as possible, but it's a very tight site and a lot of changes rates of retaining walls might be the way we have to handle it.
And you have a certification on. But, you know, I think having accurate surveyed information so we can really understand what a four or five foot cut in that field would need from elevation and how much that's going to allow us to hide it. Because it may not be that we widen out, we may have to push the track back into that, into that hillside between the old and the track where it is currently in order to get this to be a work solution. And then, you know, working with their estimating group to make sure that we have the right number related to all.
Barring any supply chain issues, do you believe that our timeline for this project is realistic?
Well, so we're all right, any timeline. So, you know, there's probably different answers for different pieces of the scope, right? The supply chain issues have hit something more than, like, we're doing the field and following this summer. And right now, our thing seems to be somewhat on track and we have to see if they finish up some supply chain. We get into, you know, the camp equipment, of course, everybody should see that. Get hit a little bit harder, especially with the tests that are lacking. And then, you know, roofing is still a big unknown. Our roof projects have had significant issues. Not the memory, but it has been the problem. It's been getting the, like, last roof project that we did for Barbara, where we waited ten months. And so, you know, we monitor that. So I think, you know, we just have to be realistic with the understanding where all those things are at and making sure that, you know, we have appropriate contingencies of budget to protect and insulate the district in that regard and have a game coming for it if it does some. Very hard.
Thank you.
Kristen?
I do, I have a question this time. What are you charging for the pre-referendum and communicating with our community?
So in our proposal, you'll see that since you've done such a significant amount of pre-referendum work where you narrowed down the scope, we, we had indicated just, we're going to do the pre-referendum without costing the district. So the only cost we would ask is if there are reimbursed expenses like printing, those would be borne by the district at the time they were expected. So pre-communication, proposed, et cetera. But the pre-referendum, there would be no cost. And, you know, obviously, if the referendum defeated, there's no cost to you. And we, I think I clarified this in my email previously. And then we would move on from there. But you've done a lot of those, so it's not like we're coming in starting at square one. We're looking at every single thing in the district. You've got a very focused list. For the pre-referendum communications, we offer that free charge to everyone. They have full access to that. Bill will come and he'll run the drone all over your campus to create overhead jobs and explain people to work at the fields and see us, all of our interviews and videos and filmmaking. That allows you to not have expenses on your posts or communication costs. Recognize our fines for doing that, but we have this wonderful health resource that just loves to do it.
So what process does your team have to either reduce or eliminate, change or?
So we go through several, you know, quality control reviews, very. So we go through several quality control reviews, very important of completing our assignments, and certainly part of that is also working with the construction manager. We could also be doing a constructibility review during that process. And we like to do that and have those checks throughout the design process at SD and ED, and then again, ED, the book at the state. And we have that as an independent check. If someone completely unfamiliar with the project, do that quality control review check for us in our office, because those typically familiar. If something was not there, we'd test or pick up on it. So we do that as a course on all of our projects. Of course, we have our own CM bridge, and so they often take a look at our project results from a constructibility standpoint. We would certainly be relying on that as well, of course, to do lots of projects and that, so with how they work, they have. But you've got to go through that and have those checks drill out. But you also have to understand, have those appropriate contingencies for things that you don't, right? A field project is a state down, we don't know what we don't know, right? Can't take test fit across that field. And so we have to be prepared, there might be organics or things that we don't necessarily realize, or even a rock or a property that's in there. You have to be able to protect yourself.
There is some preliminary geotext and board. We'll get those right away on the field, same time that we do the geographic survey. That gives us a really good idea of what we're working with, but like you said, unless we're going to do the two feet on center, you could run into something. Number of years ago, when we were Sullivan West and we dug up a pole, so you'd never know what you're going to hit.
Never know, right?
Are you good?
Yes.
Thanks for coming down.
Yes.
We're going to try to make a decision tonight, and if not, we have a meeting on the 26th of April, and we'll be in touch.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Worked with a lot of districts, you know, Sullivan County, with that Sullivan, both these taking the course through, we talked, and work at Fall River, Sullivan West, so it's certainly appreciated. Certainly appreciate it. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks for coming.
I prefer you to fall down. And I have to go. You want me to put this presentation from the desktop? I noticed Land did that. Do you need it, sir?
Oh.
Hey, Dennis, go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I saw theirs was there, so I can dump this in. Appreciate it. It's good to see you again. Thank you. Thank you to see you again.
Take care, buddy. Come on, see you later.
Thank you, sir.
Take it easy.
See you again.
Take care.
Take care.
Stacy, you already making mine up? You already making mine up?
It's tough. It's tough, because some of the questions you asked, these guys did a lot of work consulting. They worked for a lot of small districts. The other guy, he brought in all the turf, that was his, talking to Felinger, the owner, he says that's what he specializes in. To me, turf is tough. Yes, there's different aspects, but they're all going to use the same turf, right? Bob, jump in here anytime.
Are you out of here?
No, this is all public.
Okay.
Right? We're going to keep this public. Yeah.
What you should do is look at all three firms.
Can you use the mic?
Give her Nancy's.
Doesn't make sense to record if you can't hear.
You can take that one as a book.
No, just turn it off, please.
You got to stop.
Okay. So we did six or seven of them.
So you narrowed it down to the three firms, which was good, okay? What you should do next is look at their fees, okay? Look at their base fee for the professional services and then see what the costs are for the public relations piece. Like the last people, CS Arch, their fee is included in their base fee. So you're going to see a range, okay? In the end, it's probably evened out somehow, you know? Where land has additional costs for the public relations, they may be lower and come up to CS Arch level. I don't recall Felonzer if they had public relations in there.
They're included.
It's included, okay.
Based on what you know from the companies, which one, or is there one that stands out that has a lot more change orders? Because that's money.
No, we're all about the same.
Have you had personal experience with all three?
What was that?
Have you had personal experience with all three firms?
Yes.
You started all the interviews also.
Right.
Yeah, we've worked with all three firms. Probably Land and CS Arch more than Felonzer. They're all good. You narrowed it down. I mean, you had Mamasi, which was a newer company, and BBS is the other two companies that came in for the interviews, and you made a good selection. In the end, it's going to be making a connection with that firm and knowing them and them knowing you and the board to get the right project.
That's right. Everybody's all around the sports field, because it's the biggest part of the bond, let's face it, right?
It's 35% of the bond, so yeah, the next piece is the roof.
Is the roof.
You know, so those are the nuts and bolts of the bond.
But nobody brought up, see, I didn't ask any questions because I was there for all the interviews, so we asked all the questions that you guys had asked, which was good. There's a tank we got to remove that wasn't brought up there, but they all do tank removal. They're all a part of it.
One of the firms did bring that up.
I'm sorry?
One of the firms did bring that up.
The second one, I think.
I think Felonzer brought that up.
Felonzer brought up?
And one group said the roof is not really something the public is interested in.
Yeah, Land said that.
I think the elementary parents are very interested.
Yeah. Yeah. In the end, I think you've got to look at the fees and see where they are on the fees, okay? And what could be additional costs. The other question I would ask would be, I know they showed environmental, CS Arch, I don't know if the other two had environmental, and what does that mean? Because mostly environmental is an added additional service. Usually is not in the architects' engineers' fees, but they did show it from CS Arch, and I thought maybe it was one of the other two that had it. Maybe it was.
Could have been one, the other one's the interview.
Yeah, maybe it was one of the.
When you're looking at these prices, Land and Felonzer over a million dollars, I'm looking at it, right, what they're.
Well, Felonzer, we gave the other two companies an opportunity to lower their fee. Caleb said they haven't done that yet. I don't know if we've asked them to.
I think we asked all three.
We had that conversation.
Yeah, no, we had that conversation at the interview.
Yes, we did.
And so they had.
So your point is well taken. We can ask them after this going forward what their bottom line is.
Yeah, and what it includes and what it doesn't include.
I thought you said we've got the bottom line.
I didn't see all of that. I didn't see all of that yet. You know, I mean, I saw the initial, but.
Now that they've presented, we can now, we can negotiate more of a decrease.
Yeah. So I'm looking at this Felonzer paper, total bond of, say, $13 million, proposed fee 6.95%. So if we take that 6.95% versus the $14 million, that's only 974,000 versus a million.
Yeah, I don't think that figure is the bottom figure. That's what you're saying, right?
Yeah, we've got to confirm what Felonzer's bottom line is.
I put my ear in the fees exactly what we're going to cover. I don't know what they all are, but that's for one. I didn't look through the other ones. I just got those. Do I have to know if that's something that they?
So what is Felonzer, you said? What is it?
6.95%. Well, 6.95% is what they put on that letter you're reading.
Next one's at what?
974.
974, 426, for $14,020,005.
CS Arch had an original amount, so they already came down.
They were 7.25.
Yeah, so they're in the running with CS Arch.
CS Arch has.
Mm-hmm, CS Arch.
Yeah, I think you've got to do a chart quick and see, I know Kalib is away, but see what he has.
He'll be back Monday.
What Monday?
I think this coming Monday.
This coming Monday?
Lisa, he'll be back this Monday?
Me?
Caleb.
Caleb, you should.
Because when school gets back in session, we got a meeting that Tuesday. Monday's back in session, Tuesday's a meeting.
I think he'll be back next week.
He's talking about this upcoming week or?
The week before that.
He's the birthday.
The 18th.
Right.
Caleb will be back the 18th.
Right, Caleb will be back next week. Our meeting is right after we come back to school, and we're going to need answers by then. We're going to move forward with this, is what I'm getting at.
You should be in next week to be able to work on.
Thought we had all them answers ready.
You may have it.
Yeah, but I don't have it.
Let me get it.
Right one. If this is.
We don't know.
I don't have the right one to make a recommendation tonight.
When I left him on Thursday, he was getting information, he was calling people, we both called together, a couple of them, we called Land, and he was working on that. So I thought he had all of that already, so maybe it's just a quick call to him and see if he has it somewhere.
Yeah, maybe.
Well, I'll weigh in from a standpoint of professionalism, and if the presentation is any indication of how they'll handle the project, I'm leaning more towards Felonzer.
Leaning towards?
Felonzer.
Good.
Based on the emails that I'm reading, it does look like revised estimates that they provided, because updated fee requested, they originally started, this is CS Arch, at $1 million, and then they said revise.
Yeah, those were revised. I don't know about Felonzer though.
And Land had those say they started at a certain amount. Also, Land has included $100,000 design fees to serve. Is that something that they?
I've never heard of that.
I'm assuming they arrived with a pre-ref referendum phase.
That's what we.
That's included in their fee?
So that figure is different than the.
That was included in their fee?
All right, so the accurate fee is 974, where you.
Yes, Felonzer. It was in the back major there.
Oh, you have something in writing?
Yeah.
Okay, so that would.
You also have.
Yes, I have that.
$1,000 potentially.
Well, so if you don't need it. But this is based on a $13 million bond. Would I just put the $14 million number in?
We were looking at 16.8 million is what we reduced the projects to, and that's what everybody was given, and they were told base your fee on that. It's going to come down from 16.8 to try to get to 14 or 15, whatever was coming off, the old bond.
It's about 14.
We were at about a million and a half above that, correct?
We were at 16.8.
Hold on. All right, so let's hold up on that. I got Caleb on the phone, I'm going to put on the speakerphone so everybody can hear it. Go ahead, Caleb.
Okay, so the numbers that they gave me were based on a percentage, based on what we've got there. So I've got 6.95% is what, of whatever the construction costs are, is what Felonzer is doing, okay? I do believe it is 7.1% is what Land is doing. Now, CS Arch didn't, they did a flat fee, they didn't tell me a percentage.
But Felonzer, you have down as 13 million.
They put 13 million, so but then, but they said it was 6.95%, so I did 6.95% of 14,200. That's 14,200 right now is what that spreadsheet has in construction costs.
It's 1,016?
So 1,016 is 6.95% of 14,200.
No.
No, it's not.
Which is what that current spreadsheet has us at.
No, I just calculated it. It's 974,000.
No, 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 that's at 13 million. He did it at 14.
I did it at 14.
Yes, at 14 million.
973.
974,000.
That 7.1% was what I saw at CS Arch's paperwork, right?
I lost two things in there.
Oh, my phone's.
7.25, yeah.
Oh, 7.25?
On construction costs.
Okay.
The current one proposal to 16 million.
It's math, don't worry.
When do you return?
I am returning Saturday.
You'll be in Monday?
I will definitely be in Monday.
So, all right.
All right, so we'll just try to get these numbers right tonight here. So it's 974 at 14 million?
Yes.
And these other costs from Land's associates and CS Arch, 98 million, or 985,000?
Yep. Right, and CS Arch gave me a flat fee, they didn't give me a percentage.
965,000.
Yes, they just gave me, they just said flat rate, that's what it is.
So the fees are close enough.
Well, Land is going up. 7.1% of 14 million is 995,000.
Plus 30,000 referendaries.
Plus their pre-ref.
Plus 30,000.
Yeah, and Land will want money if the bond goes down. CS Arch does not. We have to ask Felonzer what they would want.
Okay. We're going to do that Monday.
Okay.
All right, have a good vacation. We'll see you, talk to you on Monday.
Okay. Yeah, if you need me, call me again. I'm not going to be able to talk for like 10 minutes, I'm just going through the turnstiles.
Okay.
Where is he?
Bye.
Disney.
Where is he?
He's in Disney.
All right, so.
We can call Felonzer for you tomorrow if you need, and say you need to tell us what your public relations piece would be.
Well, they say that it's included, because that was one of the specific questions that I asked them was.
We'll confirm.
They said, absolutely. They said the pre-ref is included.
And what is the bond we're going for? Is that the 14,200,054?
We're going somewhere between 14 million and 16.8. We got a.
We have to give them.
Pre-ref now, take the 16.8 and bring it down a little bit.
It's got to be around 14, because we told the public there would be no increase in tax.
Right, right. That's exactly what we said.
We just need to see what gets reduced.
Okay.
Well, we told them that the maker space, we weren't going to convert our libraries. We're going to keep the libraries, we'll turn them up, and we'll make a maker space in a separate location. That will save us some money.
Mm-hmm.
But Stacy's correct, there, with Felonzer, their PR is included.
You saw that somewhere?
Yes.
Okay, then we don't have to call them.
PR's related. PR's related, CS Arch also.
So the only one that was different was Land.
Was Land.
Land, they just had the marketing firm, they work with Lisa, but that, as far as a PR firm, they would say, we tell districts to hide. But they don't have any.
Also, when the PR for CS Arch, they would want their fees to be for postage and print.
Right, they want.
Two pieces they do not.
They said that, they said if there's any printing, that's what they would look to get, as far as.
Yeah, it's mostly any firm.
And Land, you know, the only PR firm they have worked with is Focus Media, which is out of, I do believe, Goshen. I dealt with them before when I was in Tuxedo.
What is your experience?
We used them in Tuxedo to try to get enrollment. So they made commercials, they made flyers, billboards, things like that. But that was, it wasn't for a capital bond project, it was to get enrollment.
Well, we told them that the maker space, we weren't going to convert our libraries. We're going to keep the libraries, we'll tune them up, and we'll make a maker space in a separate location. That will save us some money.
But Stacy's correct, there, with Felinger, their PR is included.
You saw that somewhere? Okay, then we don't have to call them.
PR's related.
So.
PR's related, CS Arch also.
So, the only one that was different was Land?
It was Land.
Land, they just had the marketing firm, they work with Lisa, but that, as far as a PR firm, they would say, we tell districts to hide.
That's what I'm trying to do right now.
But they don't have any.
Also, when the PR for CS Arch, they would want their fees to be proposed to.
Right, they want.
They said that, they said there's any.
Right.
That's what they were, that's what they were looking at, or as far as.
Yeah, it's mostly any firm.
And Land, you know, the only PR firm they have worked with is Focus Media, which is out of, I do believe, Goshen. I dealt with them before when I was in Tuxedo.
What is your experience?
We used them in Tuxedo to try to get enrollment. So, they made commercials, they made flyers, billboards, things like that, but that was, it wasn't for a capital bond project, it was to get enrollment.
Did it work?
She's not with Tuxedo.
The verdict is out.
I like that CS Arch said that they will come to like our public workshops. I'm wondering if Felinger would do the same.
They would all do it.
They'll all do it.
They would all do it. They'd have to do it, yeah.
Okay.
Why are you leaning towards Felinger? I was walking out to try to get ahold of Caleb.
What?
Why are you leaning towards Felinger?
Why am I leaning?
Yeah, I didn't hear you, I was walking out to call Caleb.
I think that if their presentation and professionalism was any indication of how they're going to handle this project, it's, it makes me feel most confident.
Well, the other thing is too, is that they're local. I mean, they're as local as you're going to get. I mean, the other, the other firms are at a.
Albany.
Newburgh, now Newburgh and Albany, and where's Land at?
New Jersey.
Goshen.
Goshen, that's what I thought, Goshen, Albany.
Yeah, Goshen.
Most of them have, most of them have an office up in Albany. Well, I'm going by the six, what did we interview, six or seven? Six, right?
Seven.
Seven, it was seven, right? Four and two or three, right? Yeah, so we did seven.
No, five. I know. Yeah, five, we interviewed five. Two and three.
Okay, so we did five. Everybody had an office either up in Albany or Westchester. Felinger did not. They were, they're pretty much localized in Middletown.
Yeah.
Family-owned business, you know?
You have two offices, right?
Yeah, one in Poughkeepsie.
So, can we eliminate Land tonight?
I think so.
Are we comfortable doing that? Amador?
Yes.
Nice, so Land's eliminated. You agree with that, Bob?
Whatever you decide.
Because I know you worked with all of them. I mean, you have a, I mean, I know you don't, I'm putting you on the spot here.
Yeah, no, I don't have a vote, but.
I know you don't.
Go with anybody.
Whoever we decide.
I did, because you got to work with.
That's right, yeah.
I agree with Stacy's perception of Felinger.
They were good in the interview. We, you know, we were kind of, you know, we had already landed on Land, and we already landed on the CS Arch, and then they showed up last, and they were like, when Caleb and I looked at them, I was like, wow, seriously, you know, we were, we were impressed. I mean, if we want to, if we want to go with them, I'm comfortable with doing that tonight, if that's the route we want to go, unless we want to wait to see.
Let's confirm as far as their percentage is concerned. I mean, I know we have it in writing, but, you know, Caleb makes me feel less confident, so.
So, do we want to open up the meeting on the 26th and go ready in the executive session? Because we need to have this done on the 26th.
I think so.
I wanted to do it tonight, but there's some open-ended questions.
Yeah.
So, are we good with that?
Yes.
So, we'll open the meeting up, and we'll go ready in the executive session. We'll have the hard numbers.
Yeah.
If Caleb could maybe email them to us, the numbers.
Well, I'll take care of it.
So then, we can pretty much have our decision made, because I hate to go into executive session right off the bat. You leave people hanging there.
Right.
Well, if we have the hard numbers, it should be a quick talk.
I was just going to say.
Should be minutes, so, just like the last couple we did.
Yeah.
So, we're agreeing to do that, right? So, we narrowed it down to two, Felinger and CS Arch. We'll go into executive session right off the bat, and we shouldn't have a problem.
So, stormwater inspections is something that can, has to be every week and every half-inch rainfall.
Yeah, they talked about that in the interviews.
Okay.
And when you get a bad storm, fence up, pond, you know, all kinds of stuff, runoff.
Right.
They talked about, because we got to work back there, we got to.
Yes.
If we run off into the stream, we're in trouble.
So, is SWIPs ordered the fees? That's a question.
That's another question.
SWIPs is the inspections for rainfall. Normally, that is not. That is an additional cost. It's usually, sometimes by the design firm, sometimes by an outside company. Doesn't necessarily have to be by the design firm. He asked the question now.